Good evening. Jeff Armstrong, Director of Planning and Development Services. This is a discussion of a possible moratorium on multifamily development. The presentation's relatively brief. I want to just visit with you a little bit about the moratorium in general. To do a moratorium, there'll be three meetings required, and I have an actual proposed calendar coming up. But it does require three meetings, one with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and two readings by the City Council. The Planning and Zoning Commission meeting will be a public hearing, and one of the City Council meetings would be a public hearing. And those must all occur within a 12-day period, so it would require a special meeting of this council to make that possible, to have all three of those meetings in a 12-day span. The other meeting would be a regular meeting. How it works is, once the notice is published in the newspaper, I believe four days before the Planning and Zoning Commission would hold their public hearing, the day after their hearing, assuming they were in concurrence, a temporary moratorium would go into effect. And that would be in effect until you all as a council make a final decision within that 12-day period. Texas Local Government Code 212.135 does require you to make findings, and those would be in any moratorium ordinance that we'd bring in front of you, but findings that would justify having a moratorium. The moratorium would be valid for 120 days if you were to approve it unless, prior to the end of that time period, you were to hold another public hearing to extend that moratorium. And as you may recall from the truck stop and truck parking moratorium we do, we'll be required to have a waiver process where somebody can come in, come to you all, and apply for a waiver from that moratorium process, and you would consider those on a case-by-case basis. Let me get the right clicker here. There we go. I have put together the most aggressive moratorium calendar that we could possibly do, if you were interested in that. The important part of that, I want to point out to you two things. On December 11th, the temporary moratorium would go into effect. You would need to hold a special meeting on December 11th or 12th, that's a Tuesday or Wednesday. If you were to do that, we would have an item on your December 3 meeting where you would approve that special meeting following that, and I've been working with this land to make that happen, depending on your direction tonight. The second public hearing would be then on December 17th, and if you approved that, then the permanent mor-- or permanent's probably the wrong word, the 120-day moratorium would go into effect at that time and would expire on April 16, 2019. That's really what I have for you. Again, this is a residential moratorium, as opposed to commercial moratoriums that we've done in the past. The commercial moratoriums are a little more, are a little less difficult, I guess, to justify. There are a little more opportunity in the local government code to do those, but it is possible to do a residential moratorium as well. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those. Any other discussion, or if you want to move forward with like to know 11th or 12th if possible. We could, it doesn't have to be tonight, but we've got to get that on the schedule for the 3rd pretty quickly.
Thank you, Jeff. I know we've had lots of discussion. I see several lights on in regards to this. Mr. Arkin?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I appreciate the work that's gone on this, Jeff and Cliff and staff. Over the last few years, I've had a large number of residents express to me their concerns overwhelmingly about the effects of unprepared and unplanned-for apartment construction. Specifically, the last two, I believe, that were built, the Villas of Vanstone Park and the Park East Apartments, I've had a number of residents express that they felt like their concerns on things like impact on infrastructure, traffic, as well as the impact on nearby school campuses, that that was not really looked at as close as it should have been prior to the approval of those last two complexes. And I think that after we had such a successful operation last year with the approval of the truck stop moratorium, many have expressed, if we would do the same thing with apartments, to take just a few months to have some good discussions, some planning, preparation, to talk about in the future when future apartment complexes will come, and they will come in the future, that we're more prepared to avoid negative issues and problems that can come up with an apartment complex that we didn't really think through before it came in, especially with nearby school campuses. So I feel like since we had such a successful experience with the moratorium on truck stops, as has many of my constituents, I felt the need to advocate on their behalf this tonight, and hope we can have some good discussion on this.
Thank you. Councilman Casper?
Thanks, Mayor. Jeff, did we conduct, or did the developers conduct, impact study, traffic study at Villas and Park East?
There was certainly at Park East. There was a, some traffic study done on entrances and exits, or ingress and egress, and the effect on Gus Thomason. Maybe Mr. Holesaffel could help with his memory in mind together of what was done on Villas Advanced, and certainly that was part of all the reconstruction of the Thomason Square project was all involved in, with the changing around the Oats Road portion of Gus Thomason.
Okay. And just kind of a follow-up on that. What more could we require of the development community before they would construct to study the impact that their development's going to have on the neighborhood?
Well, certainly, we can require traffic impact analysis, and depending upon the results of those studies determines what we can do in terms of requiring improvements to the street and traffic flow in the immediate area.
Okay. What data or analytics, I guess, initiated this discussion tonight?
It was, it was from, it came to me as a request, I believe, through the city manager from some council members.
Okay. So do we have any data of the necessity of doing a moratorium? Are there current applications in the PAM meetings for apartments like there were for the truck stop conversations?
We have, excuse me, we have no current applications or opinion requests. We, from time to time, get people, particularly certain times of year when the tax credit project cycle rolls around, we get inquiries. A lot of those were able at a staff level to kind of give them some insights into how things are done, and a lot of those go away.
So beyond the kind of seasonal tire-kicking we do around tax credit development season, there is not just a flood of applications in the PAM meetings right now?
No, sir.
In the pipeline? Okay. Two questions about how this process would work. If the P and Z Commission doesn't approve, is the process dead?
They make a recommendation, I believe, to the council, so like any other recommendation, it would come to the council.
Okay. And maybe this question is for David, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'm curious about the local government code 212.135, and what findings would be required, and whether we have analytics that back that up?
I think that provision of the local government code was provided to council. That along with, I think there's 135.1 and 135.2, and they have similar but varying findings that the council would need to make. And the legal department's not aware of the data or analytics that would support those findings, but certainly we could discuss what those, what the local government code requires as far as the findings that you'd have to make.
Could we just a little bit summarize those?
Yeah, so they both focus on essential public facilities, and that's defined for us in the local government code as water, sewer, storm drainage facilities, and street improvements. So under 135, you would need written findings that the current public facilities are at or near capacity, that a portion of that capacity, what would be committed to the development that would be subject to the moratorium.
And I don't want to interrupt your flow, but these findings that we're talking about, water, sewer, drainage, roadway, is it "and" or is it "or"?
It's "or." It is "or." And then we'd also have to look or have, need some information from staff on the impact fee revenue that would be allocated to address these facility needs. One thing to note is that if a moratorium is adopted by the council under this provision, it can only be implemented with respect to an area that is missing these essential public facilities. For instance, if there's a portion of the city that no doubt can be served with our existing public facilities, the moratorium cannot extend to that portion of the city. It would need to be limited only to those portions of the city that's lacking these essential public facilities.
That's lacking water, sewer, drainage?
In a capacity adequate to serve the new development. Now, there is another provision in the local government code under which a moratorium can be implemented. That's 1235.1 of Chapter 212, and it has a similar focus, but we'd have to demonstrate, or the staff would need to demonstrate, and the council would have to agree that there's a significant need for other public facilities, which in this instance is not limited to streets, water, sewers. It could also include things such as parks, or what's cited in the code, or police and fire protection. And in that case, there'd need to be a demonstration that the existing ordinances and regulations are inadequate to prevent the new development from causing an overcapacity of municipal infrastructure, or that it would be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare of the affected area.
Okay, so for a layman, the second statute that you read, we would not be able to develop this piece of land because it needs to be a fire station according to public safety?
That would be one way of showing it, if that's correct. Or you could show that it would have a negative impact on the health, safety, and welfare of the affected area. There are a couple of other requirements that go along with that, that we don't have alternative methods already in place to address these unsatisfactory results, and that the city is indeed working on a plan and has a time schedule for achieving the objectives sought, the reasons why the moratorium is imposed.
Okay. And one other question about this process. Is this a process that's undertaken by a lot of municipalities? What is the kind of litigious risk? And that might be more a side conversation downstairs, but I'm just curious how often this is litigated.
You know, Jeff may know better than me how often other cities impose moratoriums. My personal experience is, they're not very common. Although, to answer your question, I can't, I can't think of the last one that was litigated. There are a couple of cases out there in the past.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Burrows?
Just a follow-up on Jeff's. So I hear you talking about the sewer, water, and stuff like, you know, the different things that the city is directly affected. The school district is not part of the city, so can we still have this and consider the school, the school district too, as what we're gonna, what's gonna affect the school district?
That's a question for me. I've not seen where the school can be factored into the considerations undertaken in connection with a moratorium, although I'm happy to be disagreed with it, if anyone has seen that. I'll look over my shoulder to the legal department and I'm not getting any disagreement.
Other questions? Comments?
Question, Mr. Passmore. And I may have misunderstood. I was thinking, when we met the other morning with you and the C. Manger and Ms. Steiner, that when we discussed that school impact was something that could be considered.
We'd be happy to dive into that and determine, because certainly if it is a factor that can be suited, it certainly should be. I've just not seen that in any of the statutes or any of the case law that I've reviewed in connection with moratorium.
I think when it comes to the moratorium, no, we did not discuss the ability for a school to, but subsequent regulations on apartments and apartment development, we can use the impact on the schools for development regulations.
So we couldn't make a finding that it had a specific impact on school infrastructure, but during a moratorium, if one were passed, we could develop specific regulations, for example, requiring a school impact study that then this group or subsequent group could look at and use in considering whether or not to grant, say, a conditional use permit or zoning change for an apartment complex, or maybe a PD.
Okay. So Mayor, just some comments, and those are good questions that have been posed. I appreciate that very much. What a number of residents have expressed to me, for example, with infrastructure, their concerns are not just the infrastructure within an immediate area around an apartment complex. For example, the Villas of Vanstone Park, while we're making improvements right around that Thomason Square area, there are vast areas beyond that area where future traffic from an apartment complex, or there from the Villas of Vanstone Park, go through every day. In fact, the neighborhood right across the street, Oats there, like where Marigold and all the streets behind, behind the Minnards Shopping Center, the street bond has not gotten to that area yet. Parts of Oats have not gotten touched yet. Parts of Gus Thomason, going further down south, will not be a part of this current road project. So I think there's a citywide concern by many residents that our infrastructure, and I think from our survey, we see a lot of residents who are very concerned about our citywide infrastructure. So that's one thought. And as far as schools go, you know, again, if you talk to the principal and staff at Shands, you talk to the principal and staff at Tosh, when those apartments were built, there was a great concern, as well as school employees citywide, when there was a discussion recently of apartments going into the rodeo area. Huge concern I had from a lot of school employees that that would be much more of a difficulty than some single-family building out there. So I think this is a whole lot more than just a concern about an immediate area around an apartment complex, but as well as that concern about that close area as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I do have a question. When we did our truck stop moratorium, leading up to that,
did we have a specific study, analytics, metrics, talking about the specific impact of trucks on our streets?
No, sir.
So in fact, when we adopted that moratorium, we used our just knowledge of the fact that the trucks were tearing up our public streets, and this body, these same seven individuals, adopted a moratorium and made specific findings on the impact of our public streets and infrastructure based upon not needing to have truck stops overwhelm the infrastructure of our streets. Isn't that right?
That's how I remember it, yes, sir.
That's a different standard, though, isn't it? For, the moratorium for commercial property is a different standard than residential property, correct?
There's additional things that you can consider in commercial moratorium that you cannot in residential.
It's not a different standard. It's not a heightened standard. It's just different items to consider in residential.
But there's additional factors.
He didn't say that. Did you say there are additional factors, like we can only adopt a residential if you do five extra things? For example, if we adopted a residential moratorium and we found that it would overwhelm the capacity of our public streets, that development in a certain manner without adopting our codes can overwhelm the infrastructure of our public streets or traffic flow, is there an additional element that we'd have to find?
No, sir. I don't believe there's, in that circumstance, there's not necessarily an additional element. You could base it on that.
Which is the exact parallel to our truck stop moratorium. We made that exact same finding for our truck stop moratorium, and we could make that exact same finding on, not that I intend to state or support it just on traffic flow or traffic street impact, but we could do that just based on that. Parallel and the exact same impact on our streets for both, correct?
It's not exactly the same thing when you're talking about the effect of trucks on a street versus a certain number of cars being added to a street system.
One truck versus 50 cars, right? It's not, it's apples and oranges, but it still has an impact, and we can make that finding. And we don't have to have, just like we didn't with the truck stops, there's nothing legally that requires us to have a six-month study.
No, there's nothing legally that requires.
Thank you.
Mr. Casper, here.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I would just say that the vehicular traffic that goes to truck stops is trucks. The vehicular traffic that comes from apartments are sedans and automobiles, the same that go to single-family homes. And frankly, we have approved subdivision after subdivision in the last few months of X number of cars additionally. And I think it would be an interesting jump to say that somehow apartment vehicle traffic is more damaging or is going to flood our roadways, but apartments won't. The other thing I'll say is, we, this body, these same men, have sat in joint sessions with the school board, where a demographer each year has come forward and has studied and reminded us that more kids come from single-family homes than do apartments. And so to say that somehow it would flood our schools, I think is, is not anything from my anecdotal experience or from the demographic studies that we have been showed each and every year. When a student shows up in my classroom, I teach them. I don't know if they're from a home or if they're from an apartment, and it doesn't make any difference. And it doesn't make any difference to the roadway either. And so whether iron horse is townhomes, or villas, or condos, or single-family homes, what we should be looking at is, is just a traffic study, which we already do, which we did for Park East. And so I think it's interesting that we're not discussing any sort of moratorium on subdivisions generally, when we've had issues with development agreements at the midnight hour and not having redone our subdivision ordinance, which we know this body wants to do. But we're not discussing a moratorium of subdivisions. We're discussing a moratorium on apartments, because frankly, that's politically easy. That wins us a lot of points, and I don't approve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And all good comments, and I appreciate the different perspectives. Let me, let me give a couple of examples. Let's talk about infrastructure for just a moment. I was not on the council when the Park East Apartments were approved. However, I was on the council two years later when we approved changes in the infrastructure for Motley Drive, and when the voters approved the street bond election for grade four residential streets. I don't remember or know how much of a discussion there was in 2013 or 2012 when the Park East Apartments were allowed to go forward. However, they would, they would have had to be discussions or some planning, but nothing had been approved. So I want you to understand the concerns that residents have when they talk about wanting us to have some better planning, because at that time, in their minds, there was no planning for future infrastructure improvements all around the Tosh area or the Motley area, where we're now building that new road, nor had we done anything, taken any steps to approve, or put out to voters to approve $125 million street bond election. So understand and be empathetic with those residents who would like us to see us do a better job in the future on that. As far as the schools go, I did sit at probably my first joint city and school district dinner, when at the time, President of the School Board, Phil Appenzeller, very passionately said to all of us, and I feel like at the time, Councilman Nocia, you agreed because you voted with me to vote against the Villas of Vanstone Park. At the time, I also expressed your concerns about the impact on the school district. If I'm wrong, correct me, forgive me. But he said, please, don't do any more apartment complexes, well, including us as partners, because this affects us. So please consider those things tonight.
Mayor Proton?
In regards to the moratorium, I know the moratorium, when we went through it with the truck stop, it was, it was introduced simply as a pause. Let's pause, let's step back, let's take a look at it, let's see what, what folks want to say about that. I think it's good just to bring it up to the forefront. If it's such a hot topic, there's got to be a reason. It's a hot topic with a lot of folks. Got to be a reason. And, and we can share and talk and listen to all of these different things, but to know that folks out there get frustrated when they hear about apartments, well, it's good to step back and find out, okay, what are the issues? Let's talk about the issues and bring them out to a hearing so that they can speak up and share about that. Is it the traffic? Is it the overcrowded schools? Is it what it does to a neighborhood? Whatever it might be, but at least to give the people an opportunity to, to come out as well and to share their own thoughts about what they feel in regards to apartments and what changes need to be made so we can do a better job in seeing these apartments come in. I know there are certain apartments in the area that sometimes we think, man, it'd be great to get rid of these apartments and put in homes, because these apartments have brought in so much crime. That's been brought up, and I've heard the discussion about that. Let's get rid of certain apartments. They bring in so much crime. Well, what are the changes can be made, that can be made in seeing more apartments come in, but to make sure something about security is put in strongly for these folks that want to bring in apartments? There are different things that we can look at. So, anyway.
Thank you. Councilman McLeod, your lights have been on.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me try and stay concise on developing what the other council members have said, and then pushing this forward. First, a sedan or a pickup truck has less of an impact on a road than an 18-wheeler. But 30, or 50, or 100 sedans have an absolute impact on a road in two different ways. It has an impact by going over the roads continuously, but it also has an impact on traffic and traffic flow. And I'll give you an exact example. What we just looked at with History Maker Homes earlier, the proposal is for 151 townhouses. At five trips per day, that development would generate 750 trips. At 28 and a half acres, if it was developed for apartments, that would be 700 apartments at our current standards, or 700 apartments at four and a half trips per day, that would be 3,050 trips per day. On a road, where this body, by a four-to-three vote, voted to reduce the lanes and take out 12,000 trips per day availability on the road. That's what we're talking about when we're talking about a roads where our satisfaction with roads and streets is at 30%. We're spending $125 million to repair roads, and the number one priority of our citizens is to fix the roads. All throughout our city, and I'll give Town East as an example, south of 80, I've had citizens call me, and they've said, it sounds like drums next to my house because of the cars and trucks hitting unrepaired potholes. We are spending 10, no, I'm sorry, $11 million to repair Skyline. Repairing 12, we're spending $12 million to repair Town East. We're fixing Gus Thomason. We just blacktopped Gross and Kearney, sorry. Sorry, sorry. We just blacktopped Northwest It is obvious to anyone that our infrastructure, our roadway infrastructure, and our traffic situation is dire and overwhelmed right now, so we can say, well, let's just do nothing about it. Or we can then look at our ordinances and say, do they adequately protect our citizens? Or can we hit the pause button on apartments and do better? For example, with parks, and just today, I had a meeting in Colleyville, in my day job, and in Colleyville, for every 25 residential units, they require an acre of improved park space. Other cities require 50 or 100, and that's whether it's single-family, or multi-family, or townhouse, or condos. Mesquite has no ordinance of any kind of that. We require open space, so if we're okay with our kids playing in drainage ditches and creek beds, that's what we're doing. Or we could hit the pause button on our apartments and actually let our kids play in improved The same with roadway. We may require a traffic impact study, but what specific requirements do we have for signalized traffic lights, turn lanes, or signalized traffic lights, turn lanes, or expenditures to meet the increased traffic that comes with them? And the important thing to understand is that this city, especially large sections of the city, were not built with apartment complexes in mind. And so if we're going to retrofit areas like Emporium and put 1,000 trips per day on Town East Boulevard near our mall, we need to have the ordinances to provide the solution to the impacts of this specific use. We need to do better for our citizens in the apartment complexes so that when the apartment complexes that we already have come in for rehabilitation and repair and replacement, that they would meet better standards, more livable standards, more green space, more walkability, and not just rebuild the same units that were built before. Providing that pause button to allow us only to update our standards for four to six months and then to come out with something better during the time when we are doing our comprehensive plan, it is the perfect time to fit that and dovetail it with our comprehensive plan so that when we emerge from our comprehensive plan, we have better ordinances for our apartment complexes. We have better ordinances and we have a better way of making them fit or denying them if we know for certain that they don't fit. And although the findings can't show an impact to our schools, we could have an ordinance that would require a school impact study so that we, as a council, could sit there and go, wow, that's what's going to happen to Vanstone? And then we imagine kids and portables, overwhelmed classes, and that would give us the ability to say no, instead of living in the dark and saying, I don't want to know and I don't want to require that. That's all a moratorium does. It doesn't say, we don't like people in apartments. It doesn't say, we never want apartments again. It provides us with the tools to do it right. And now is the time to do it. It's the very question you've heard from your legal counsel that it is atypical to go into litigation, and now is the time to do it where we don't have a flood of applications for apartments. So that tomorrow, while we do our comprehensive plan, we don't get an apartment complex developer go, uh-oh, I better get my application in while they're talking about revising their ordinances. A moratorium stops that from happening while we revise our ordinances. It makes perfect sense. It's sensible. It's responsible. And quite frankly, we should have done it years ago. But we are here now, and this is what we need to do in order to be responsible for our citizens across the board.
And I know we've got some other people to speak. Also, just on your last comment, we have done this. It was about 10 years ago, we did a moratorium on apartments. Mr. Nocia, you were next.
Sure. Without a moratorium, we're free to consider regulations for apartment complexes, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the moratorium would only prevent an existing property owner who has property that's already zoned multifamily from applying and going under the existing ordinance, is correct?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
And how many of those properties do we have in the city that are currently zoned multifamily?
Sir, we have, there's actually about seven vacant properties that several years ago were rezoned, traditional neighborhood mixed residential, which is quite a bit higher standard of development than our apartments. And the council rezoned most of the undeveloped multifamily properties at that time to that zoning classification. I believe there's about two parcels left that still have multifamily zoning that are vacant at this time.
So there's two parcels? And how long have those parcels been vacant?
I don't know how far back, but in the realm of decades, one or two decades at least, if not much longer.
And how long have they been vacant, I guess underneath the zoning of multifamily?
Actually, that was my first answer. I think at least one of them's been vacant, as far as I know, forever. I don't know if it's ever been developed.
Well, over 20 years.
I just, I'm finding the timing of this very interesting. There has not been a flood of apartment developers coming to our community, applying or seeking zoning for apartment development. We're now within, inside of a year of an upcoming election for council members, and we're going to pick an issue that seems to be really easy to be a champion of, all on the basis of the fact that there are two income-qualified apartment developments that were the last two apartment developments to be built in the community, and we have absolutely no complaints whatsoever or no actual data of overcapacity with regard to sewer, water, roads, with regard to the impact of those particular apartment complexes. I just find the timing of this to be very, very interesting and believe that it's really just going to be some sort of cause that's champion for reelection fodder and not really to advance the cause. I agree that revisiting the regulations is a good idea, and I think that's something that we ought to do, and I'm committed to doing that. I just don't know that a moratorium is all that necessary. So, and I would just hate to create the exposure that a moratorium might bring from litigation, and hopefully we'll get briefed on that a little bit more later, and have us go through a whole bunch of gymnastics. I seem to recall that we went through a lot of gymnastics to try and annex some land last year hastily, and that didn't work out so well. And I'm reluctant to bite off something like that again. So I just, I still just don't see the necessity at this point, and really have some questions as to why now.
I know. Mr. Casper says a lot, and I'll come back to you, Mr. Archer.
Thanks, Mayor. We've heard quite a bit about hitting the pause button, but, you know, there's no music playing. There were truck stops in the queue. There aren't any apartments in the queue. And this has been my biggest frustration with my time on the council is, to me, this is political posturing. It's not public policy. If we were looking at public policy, we'd be looking at what changes can be made. We'd have that discussion with Mr. Armstrong up there instead of dates about public meetings for a moratorium. The recommendations that Councilman Micklos talked about with Colleyville, those would be amending the development agreement that we're going to have a chance to approve tonight with Iron Horse about how many parks should go in there based on how many houses are being developed. No one's making that recommendation. No one's talking about a moratorium on subdivisions, which have just as high an impact on our roads and on our schools. We're not requiring Iron Horse to do a school impact study tonight. It's a double standard, and it comes from the political posturing of being anti-apartment. And there are no analytics to back any of this up. There are no analytics to back up that apartments somehow bring more crime than single-family subdivisions. It's easy dog whistles. They're not real public policies that we're discussing. Mr. Holzapfel, can you talk about the impact of habitual trucks? Because we kind of were talking, you know, one truck to 30 cars, but truck stops bring nothing but trucks all day. What is the impact of vehicle versus repetitive semi-trucks coming up and down our roads?
The impact for a fully loaded semi-truck is probably 30 times what it is a normal, you know, residential vehicle like a sedan or a pickup truck. It's all weight-related. So quite frankly, the smaller vehicles that most of us drive day to day have almost no impact on a well-designed arterial street.
And do you design your roadways differently if it is going to be near a truck stop or industrial use versus an apartment or a single-family subdivision feeding street?
Traditionally, we haven't, but we are now because we have a huge industrial area in Mesquite. So the roadways near those industrial areas such as Town East Boulevard, south of USA 80, the New Sign Road that's feeding the Ashley Furniture site, they're being built with heavy-duty pavements that are anywhere from 12 to 14 inches thick.
Thank you. So it's just apples and oranges when we're discussing a moratorium on truck stop versus apartments. If we were sitting here as a body discussing a moratorium on subdivision development and apartments, that would be a different animal. At least that would be consistent. If we were going to make amendments tonight to the development agreement about how many parks should go in Iron Horse, about whether we should do a school impact study for Frazier and for West Mesquite, we're not requiring that. No one's suggesting it. No one's hitting pause on that. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Archer.
Thank you, Mayor. Good comments. I appreciate everyone's input. I'll just try to make my final comments for this evening on this. A few things. Number one, when a couple of members of this body, just a few months back, suggested to the Iron Horse developers that they ought to put apartments back on the table, man, they were ready to jump on that like immediately, okay? We just had a briefing from one of two developers for the Emporium project recently, who would love to bring apartments right away if they could to Mesquite. So don't think for a second that more apartments couldn't come, or they'd come immediately. Second thing is, and we haven't even talked very much about the large number of residents who are concerned about, and I know we've pointed you to justifiably.
I haven't finished.
Who have voiced concerns about building more apartments before the many that we have right now, and I get complaints, I'm assuming y'all do too, get complaints about the terrible disrepair that they're in and the misery and squatter that many of our constituents who are tenants and those apartment complexes have to live in. And we're expending a lot of resources on those apartments today with building inspection and code enforcement. So, you know, we talk about politics. You know, I was suggesting this over a year ago, wanted to do this six months ago, but I have consideration to our city manager, who said, gosh, we've got, you know, several months ago, we had an annexation, we had the charter, number of developments, you know, to be considerate and not want to add more workload at the time. I said, we'll wait, and we'll wait, and we'll wait. But guys, you got to get out in the community and listen to people. I have had hundreds of residents express to me, both in neighborhoods, face to face, at town hall meetings, I want y'all to come more often and listen, on social media, that they want us to address this issue. And I hadn't had anybody say, let's have a moratorium on subdivisions. In fact, I've been hearing folks say, bring in more executive housing. In fact, I've heard members of this body say how important that was, and I've had members of this body in the past agree with me on this issue. Something's changed. However, I'm not hearing hardly anybody say, bring us more apartments. I'm hearing them say, let's hit the pause button, like my colleague said, and take a look at this. So, you know, it's about listening to the people. Now, if some of you think we shouldn't do that and we should open the door for more apartments, hey, I respect that opinion. But I'm trying to listen to what the people are trying to say, and they've been pretty overwhelming with their comments. I encourage y'all to get more active and listen to what they're saying. With that, I'll end with this. Mayor, I'd like to know where you stand. I think the people would too.
You know, that's not a problem, Mr. Archer. I'm sitting here trying to determine, when I keep hearing over and over again that several of us ask a developer to bring apartments, and I've told you many, many times and said publicly, many, many times, I never ask a developer to bring apartments. I was asked, regardless of what they've said to you, would you allow us to bring this for your council to consider? I said, I'm not in the allowing business. If you want to bring something to the council, then that's your choice. So to sit here tonight and to say again that several of these council members, and I was one of them, I asked for that is irresponsible for you to be saying that, even though the people told you that we said to bring them. Never happened. And I'd be happy to have him in the room, and we have one in the room tonight, but I'm not going to put him on the spot to ask him to say anything about this. In regards to this moratorium, I've had many conversations with folks. Two things, and I'm going to walk the fence, because is it needed necessary right now to make changes? Probably not. Do we have an opportunity to do this while we're going through our comprehensive planning process? Yes, I can support this, Mr. Archer, because I think as part of our comprehensive planning process, I've got no problem with looking at this for 90 to 120 days. So I hope that answers your question, and I hope that's public enough for you to understand where I stand on that. Thank you. So we do have enough people. And that's what I'd like to do, is to move this forward so we can move on.
Just as a reminder to council, we do have Jeff lined up to do a discussion on regulations starting on December 17. We believe we can get through a new regulations by the end of February.
Mayor, I want to say, in all fairness and consideration, I didn't give any names. I wouldn't be disrespectful that way. However, those developers clearly, you know, either they just made it up themselves, but for whatever reason, they feel like or felt like that they got some encouragement from this body. Now, my point was not to be critical, but to simply say, there is a heavy desire by some to build apartments here. So there's no need to take offense to that. That's just the facts and the truth.
As I said, I appreciate it, but I just, it's been said multiple times, and I thought we had dealt with this before, sir, and I just couldn't sit here and not respond.
But it wasn't alluded to you, sir. I didn't use your name one time. I simply said, they have made it very clear that they felt like they were given a green light by some of this body to do that. So there's clearly, now, if they're lying and made it up, that's a different story. But either way, they're telling us they're ready to do something if they could. Now thankfully, we put a stop to that, but that was the facts.
Well, again, since we're having this conversation, I was approached and said, could, do you mind if we bring this forward? So if you want to say that I said yes, I've said that before too. It's not my place as mayor to tell people, no, you can't bring that to this city or to this council to take a look at. I don't think they would have ever had a shot at getting it done, but I did not tell them, no, don't bring it. That's what I want to make sure we, again, our recording represents tonight. Mr. Nocia, I'll give you the last.
Well, it's not really, I just have two questions. One is, is the area where the Iron Horse development going zoned for multifamily currently?
No, sir.
Okay. And is the area at the Emporium Circle zoned for multifamily currently?
No, sir.
So you couldn't develop apartments there as of right if you were a developer developing those properties?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.